Yep, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, the meeting of the Montessorino City Council for April 2nd, 2019 will come to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and... Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alahi is absent. Councilmember Lawler?
Present.
Councilmember Luthold?
Present.
Mayor Turner?
Here. Are there any changes to the order of the day, Terry?
No changes.
Okay. Our first order of business is oral communications. I have one blue card. And let me go ahead and call Anita Enander.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council staff, and other attendees from Montessorino. My name is Anita Enander. I'm a resident of Los Altos, although I grew up on Bicknell Road and spent many years in your city and in Los Gatos. Because I've been a lifelong resident of this valley, I truly value all of the diversity of the cities that we have. I currently serve on the Los Altos City Council, but I am speaking here this evening as a private individual and as a native of the valley who wants to see our cities continue to be able to make decisions about the type of cities that we live in and what our citizens want in those cities. Today, the state senate took its first step toward what I call the demolition derby of SB 50. It is the first in a number of bills that will transform the state of California. Senator Weiner said two weeks ago at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group Economic Forum, where I was, that we have a crisis in housing, and many people would agree with him. But he said the biggest problem we have is that 74% of the housing in California is single-family. And that's a direct quote. SB 50 and a number of other bills will require or allow people to buy a lot or a house in your city and without any input or control from you, the city council, or your staff, place condos or apartments of up to 75 feet tall of whatever density the developer chooses with minimal controls on parking, with controls on how many impact fees and what types of impact fees you can collect, with complete disregard to the impact on your infrastructure and your schools. I hope that you, as a council, will begin to educate the people in your city about what is going on in Sacramento, because the number of bills that we have, including others that, for example, will allow the separate titling, sale, and transfer of ADUs, that's a bill that's in the Assembly right now, these bills will transform our state in the way that nothing has since Prop 13. I have been studying this matter for many months. Fortunately, I've been able to attend a number of meetings about it. I'm available to chat with you formally or informally, in whatever way works for your city, about the impact of some of these. And, as I said, I come here just because I think that your city is no different from Los Altos, and that is that the residents don't want to be surprised. And believe me, if these bills pass and are signed by our governor, they will transform in a stunning and amazing way the way your city is as it will transform the city of Los Altos. Many people believe that I am simply riding a unicorn and that this is some sort of fantasy. But I assure you that there are people all over the state of California, 16 independent cities in Southern California, the entire Los Angeles Democratic Party, who voted again to oppose SB 50. People all over the state are starting to come together to try and make sense of our housing situation and do something in a sensible way that also respects local government. I hope you'll be able to do the same. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Andrea, we have no written communications. So the next order of business is the consent calendar, and we have six items. Councilmember Luthold, I believe that you have a question on one of them, or a few of them?
Yeah, several of them. So, which my button just for practice here.
Oh, yes.
I wasn't ready to push it. I was taking notes earlier.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, hang on. We're practicing. So, do you see it?
I pushed my request.
And I see you.
And then I have a withdrawal request or a, it's on her screen. So what do we?
See the request to speak? I have him here, and I pressed it, but he doesn't see it.
Back to me. Or do you just dismiss it?
I just say done? I just say done?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have it now?
Well, and then you call on me verbally. Okay. So, on the first item in the minutes, I noted that the minutes did not include details regarding future agenda items. And so, I think we may address this in other places, but I think we should be addressing in the minutes more particularly what went into the future agenda items. And I think we'll also be addressing, as we go forward on future agenda items, either setting deadlines or agreeing responsibilities and feedback, or how we're going to address things. But I just wanted to note that on the minutes from last time, there was no detail at all, I don't think, on the which future agenda items and where we were going with them.
Well, a couple of things, because I did check with our city attorney. Now, all we can put in the minutes is what you talked about under that item. The disposition or how we're dealing with is done through the status report that I created and emailed to you that gives more detail on the, you know, how we're, I wouldn't say dispensing, but how we're dealing with a particular item. So the minutes can say, you know, what was brought up, but the resolution of how we're moving forward is in the spreadsheet that I've been sending to you.
Yeah, I just noted that in the minutes from last time, which is the one on the consent calendar, it just says council members brought forth potential future agenda items.
Okay, so we will add in the specifics of that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember what, actually, I don't know if there were any from the last one.
I don't know that it's particular for the last time.
Actually, I don't.
We're all learning how to do this.
I don't think, was there one?
Yes, I brought up, yeah, SB 50.
Which we're turning into ad hoc committee. Yeah, we just, we'll just make sure we know the specifics of the ones that were brought up. But as for the, you know, how we're responding to them and what course of action will be taken, just make sure you're following along with the spreadsheet that I've created.
Right. Okay, so that was, that was the comment on that.
Okay, so let's move to number three, Rose Andrews Lighting Assessment District? Hang on, let me see.
I had a question on number two as well, just a brief question on the warrant list.
Oh, did I mention number two? Oh, okay, yeah, let's go to the warrant list first, then. Let me, let me, let me do this.
Okay. Yeah, so I don't get a notice that.
Did you get a notice?
I don't get a notice, no.
I think you have to just verbally acknowledge him.
Okay.
Okay. So on the warrant list, I just noted that there is an item on the warrant list that is that there's a separate contract item for long distance with AT&amp;T in the warrant list. And I just wanted to bring this up in advance of talking about the budget, that at least in my business, we were locked into rolling contracts with AT&amp;T specific to long distance. They were very hard to break and very easy to just roll into the next year. Ultimately, I had to pay a penalty to get out of the never-ending AT&amp;T long-distance contract, where most other programs for, for communications can now include long distance. So AT&amp;T's been very good about locking people in. I have no idea how the city's is on that, but I wanted to bring it up as a budget item, maybe, to look into why we have long distance and do we need to continue to have that.
Okay. Okay, so, number three is the Rose Andrews Lighting Assessment District, and let me, Councilmember Luthold?
Okay. So, a question on number three. It indicated that there is legal work anticipated with the Rose Andrews Lighting District, and I'm wondering, for our city attorney or for the city manager, is the legal budget related to Rose Andrews part of the general retainer budget? Is it part of special projects, or is it something that gets charged?
General retainer. General retainer.
Okay. And, that's my question under three. I have another question under four, which is also Rose.
It's also Rose Andrews. Let me, let me make sure that I see you. Okay. Councilmember Luthold?
Okay. So, my question on this is, if there is any report for us as for what's coming up on the Rose Andrews District, is anything particular happening within the district? How do the residents feel about the district, the results, any need for improvement in the district, and the assessments? Anything expected in the 1920 or 2021 budget year that we ought to be aware of?
So, this is an ongoing item. It's been occurring since 1980s, and since that time, the law has changed on assessments. And so, we are limited to only collecting the same amount that has been in place prior to Prop 218. So we're working with the same pot of money every year. I believe that property owners are all notified about the assessment. They do have an opportunity to protest. I don't recall ever having a protest. So it's, it's pretty standard.
Okay, so let me go to number five, which is city council chambers. And let me see, I have Councilmember Luthold.
Okay. And this is just regarding the final IT upgrades. I saw that what's being done is within the current budget. I'm wondering how much money we have left in the budget for IT after this is done, if you know?
This would be the last item that we have. So I, you know, it pretty much brings it down to zero for this particular budget year. Well, we weren't anticipating any additional expenditures under this category. I mean, there was some, there was initially some talk of adding a CPU and a monitor at the front for the counter, you know, facing the public, so they could use it for, you know, looking at various stuff, but we've had very little demand for it. So at the moment, we've decided to hold off on that.
Because I think it looked like there was some budget remaining after the current items. And that, if there is, that would just return to the...
It would, yes. And I think that budget also, I can't remember if it includes our IT consultant, it may. So we have to leave money in there to pay him through the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay, so, we go to number six, proclamation. Any questions? No? So do I have a motion to approve these items?
I have a motion by Councilmember Luthold, and I have a second by...
Oh, how come I didn't see that?
Councilmember Lawler?
We moved quickly.
Yeah.
Now I don't have it on my screen. Did I hit motion? No?
No, we already pushed it through.
Okay.
Would you have a voting screen? Okay, I have, all votes are in.
Anita, we're testing this. If you can't...
And it passes 3-0. Thank you.
So, we have a late arrival this afternoon, this evening, with oral communication. Let me call Brian Mekachuk.
Hi, Brian Mekachuk, 17509 via Sereno. Usually people stand up here and don't have nice things to say, but I wanted to compliment one of the individuals on the staff that, I don't know if council sees that person's activities very often, and I'm talking about the building official, Rob Corrello. I think he's a true asset to the city of Monte Sereno. He's only been here a few years, or it hasn't seemed that long, but he's just done a wonderful job. And I wanted to publicly commend him to council because he just does a great job. And it's one thing to say that, you know, the planning is, is working well, and the site and architecture is working well, but it really hits the road when you're dealing with the building official. And he reviews plans and approves the plans, he does the inspections, he writes the finals. And in terms of what he does, he explains things to owners and builders, and he doesn't just say, oh, well, it has to be done, but he says, it's got to be done this way. And if there's a safety reason, a fire reason, or a structural reason, he'll explain that. So, he's a real asset to the city. The other thing is, is that, one of the things that you have to think about in the city is, is how much work is done under permits, and then how much work is not done under permits. And to the extent you've got a building official like Rob, you know, he encourages more people to do the work that's permitted versus saying, you know, oh, okay, well, I'll do this without a permit. So I just wanted to get up and compliment Rob, and my apologies for being late. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let me now go to unfinished business. So we have the wildfire emergency preparedness ad hoc committee, and today, we're going to have Terry speak on this item?
Sure, just very briefly. At the city council's meeting on February 19th, the council discussed the formation of a committee, whether it be an ad hoc or a standing committee, that would serve as an interface between city staff and the city council on matters related to emergency wildfire preparedness. At that meeting, the city council directed staff to return with the resolution creating an ad hoc committee entitled Ad hoc Wildfire Emergency Preparedness Committee. The duties that have been designated to be assigned to the ad hoc committee include coordinating with other local jurisdictions on matters related to emergency and wildfire preparedness, assisting, whoops, assisting city staff with efforts related to the formation of, at the time, we put block and neighborhood action teams, but that could come be some other type of group, whether it be the CERT or Neighborhood Watch in, in the city. And then assist city staff with research review and application for grants available to local jurisdictions to assist with efforts related to wildfire and emergency preparedness. So tonight, the city staff is bringing the resolution to you to enact the ad hoc committee, or to create it, and then recommending that you assign two city council members to serve on the ad hoc committee.
So we have two things that we're going to do under this item. One is, is to establish the committee, and two, to approve two council members on the committee. So let me do the first one first. So, Kristen, do I take a motion on the first one, and then take a motion on the second?
Yes, and you may also want to see if there's public comment.
Okay. Are there any other comments, other than Terry's? Anyone else?
I do have a question, really quick. As far as, it's okay. As far as the wording goes, where it says, "Montessorino hereby establishes the wildfire emergency preparedness ad hoc committee for a period of no more than one year," would it be better to say, "for a period of one year and subject to a one-year extension by the council, if deemed necessary?"
No. So in order for it to be an ad hoc committee, it has to be for a limited duration, and the courts have determined the maximum is one year.
Okay, that's it. Anyone else? Let me look. No, I don't have you.
Okay, well, push my button.
Okay. Councilmember Luthold?
Okay. I did just want to comment on this. This is something, obviously, that has been extremely important in the community, and that's why it has come up here, to create a interface and to really look into the emergency preparedness from the council side. As we discussed at the meeting on Saturday with the goal setting, this kind of raises above the water level to get everyone's attention, especially city council attention, working on this. I think the ad hoc committee will give us that opportunity to have two council members really spearhead the work on this and take a very active role. And I think that's something, certainly, the wildfire and emergency preparedness is perfect for that. I think we'll be able to take this model into some other areas later on. So that's my comment.
So the Los Gatos and, and Montessorino Emergency Preparedness is having a session on the 25th in Los Gatos. And that will be for the Los Gatos CERT team, as well as the Montessorino CERT team, the Neighborhood Watch, from each group. So are there any other questions or comments? No? So, let me go ahead and, does somebody have a motion to adopt and establish an ad hoc wildfire emergency preparedness committee?
I had a motion by Councilmember Luthold, and a second by Councilmember Lawler. It passes 3-0.
Okay. So now, let's look at the nomination of two council members on the committee. And I'd like to nominate myself for the committee.
I wanted to nominate Ms. Lawler for the committee as well, if she's willing.
Well, I was, I would like to give Councilmember Alahi the opportunity to do so, but he's not here, so how do I work that?
So I, I spoke with the mayor briefly about this, and just double-checked to make sure it was okay. Since Councilmember Alahi's not here, and we don't know for sure, what you could do is vote to assign Mayor Turner and Councilmember Alahi to the committee. But in the event he decides, you know, he really would rather, you know, do something else, that, that you could be the alternate, basically.
All right.
And you could do that in a motion tonight, if that is, would be what you'd like to do.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve Turner and Alahi for, as the representatives for the ad hoc committee?
With Ms. Lawler as a second.
As an alternate.
With Ms. Lawler as an alternate, if Ms. Alahi is not interested in...
Okay.
It passes, it passes 3-0. Thank you.
Okay. We have no new business. The next order of business is commission reports. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on commission reports? I better check my screen. Councilmember Lawler?
So I attended two commission meetings last week. The first was for SEVACA, the Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority. They were proud to report that they saved 95%, of their animals in 2018. They are the top no-kill shelter in the region, and they would like to see more cities represented on the board, and asked us to reach out to our neighboring cities. As well as, I also attended the Santa Clara/Santa Cruz Roundtable, which was fascinating. It was officially formed with the participation of Santa Cruz County last Wednesday. I will be attending the FAA Air Traffic 101 Tour at SFO on April 9th, as well as a future visit to Northern California TRACON in Sacramento, which handles the descent of all aircraft approaching the Bay Area. This will be a great opportunity to learn about the complexities and challenges of air traffic control. There will be a discussion at the next meeting about a potential change to the takeoff pattern at San Jose, at SJC. That's it.
Councilmember Luthold?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. I don't have anything to report under commission reports. So let me move on to council member comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? No one? Okay. So our next order of business, the city manager's report.
I had two things, one which you mentioned already, which we do have flyers up front, and we have posted on the city's website on Nextdoor, and eBlasted out the Los Gatos/Montessorino CERT and Neighborhood Watch presentation by the Los Gatos/Montessorino Police Department Thursday, April 25th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Los Gatos Town Council Chambers. And then, just a reminder, we, there's a number of wildfire preparedness community meetings, the Ready, Set, Go program. There are three or four this month in, here in the area. So I encourage all of the citizens and any of the council that have not been to the Ready, Set, Go to do so. And you can find all information about all of this on the city's website, as well as how to sign up.
Hey, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is future agenda items, and I'm sure this is a hot topic tonight. Councilmember Luthold?
Okay. So, I wanted to put on, first, first item is, I wanted to put on the creation of an ad hoc committee regarding social media policy, as a council committee for that, and see about setting that for April 16th.
It's already set.
Okay. But I, I would be looking for, and it may already be in this form, probably creation of an ad hoc committee, and having that ready to go at the meeting, if that's what the council looks for.
It will be.
The other item I have for future agenda items that I think is, it kind of fits with the social media policy, but it's a question whether the city, and this may not be so much a future agenda item as something the city may be starting to do or wanting to do, but it may be something for the council to guide on, which is publishing even more of the information the city receives about activities going on in the county. For example, there's the Bike to Work flyer that we received and the information on that. I'm not sure if the city's already, number one, putting it up on the website, but number two, putting it out on the eBlast. I don't think we necessarily want to overwhelm everybody with too much information, but we have a lot of different constituencies of people who have a lot of different interests, and so...
So we, we do, not everything that goes to the council and for correspondence, of course, goes out to the public, but we do send quite a bit of that information out. My suggestion would be, if, if you, as a councilperson, see something, you're like, Terry, I think this would be a great idea, just let me know. I mean, we, we try to be, you know, strategic, so we don't overwhelm, but we, you know, we post stuff and eBlast stuff pretty regularly on a number of topics.
And I think as we get the, the social media things figured out, then people can maybe do their own on their pet projects, or things of concern to them, either as an individual or as a council member, once we have the clarification of how we're doing those things and how we're marking them.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a, would be a great idea as well. I, I mean, the main thing that we're always concerned about is overwhelming individuals with emails and posts, because as we all know, we get way too many of those.
Yeah.
Oh, Councilmember Lawler?
I do have something.
Okay.
We've all been reading about San Jose Water, so I don't know if this is a future agenda item, or if there's a discussion that we can have about what we can do as a city regarding...
It is a topic that, even since I've been here, that has come up. I mean, there's a number of avenues. We've had the public relations person, I can't remember his first name all of a sudden, Mr. Tang?
John Tang?
Tang, yeah. Mr. Tang. He can come, you know, which can be very helpful, because you can, you know, question him directly. My feeling is, you know, generally, that's one of the best routes to go.
Okay.
Because that way, you can hear directly from the source. And he does, he's always, he's generally, well, you know, welcomes to come visit us. So if you guys feel that you'd like to have him come, he hasn't been here, it's been a little while. I think it's been more than a year since he's been by. Would you like to ask the request?
I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, I do have one, and that's the creation of an ad hoc committee for, to look at SB 50 and the CASA compact bills that have come down since 2019. And if we could agendize that, April the 16th?
It's already set.
Okay. Anything else? Any, any comments?
I just wanted to, hey, look at that, it popped right up, this time, with the request to speak.
What did you do?
Without you even doing anything, I just pushed the button, and it popped up.
Yeah, I didn't see that on my screen.
Andrea did.
Oh, you did. If you acknowledge him, then I can call him, and it'll go up there.
Okay. I just wanted to return to this San Jose Water thing you mentioned. We might be able to reach out to the PR person with San Jose Water. Would this be something where we would then follow up by setting some sort of a public meeting, or hearing, or inviting him to the council to speak to the public? Is that what you're...
Yeah, I mean, it would have, we've done this before. It is, appears as an agenda item, as generally under presentations, I think. And, you know, we just make it clear that the representative from San Jose... Yeah, I mean, it would have, we've done this before. It is, appears as a agenda item as generally under presentations, I think. And, you know, we just make it clear that the representative from San Jose Water is coming to speak to the council about their, you know, proposed rate increases or whatever the issue is. I assume it's the rate increases.
So I'm wondering whether it might make sense to bring the opposing voice into the room, maybe, I think Rishi Kumar has been leading the, against the water or somebody from rates to, to kind of provide an opposing view as opposed to just hearing from a PR person.
So it's not really a city issue. It's a, obviously a resident issue, but the customers of the San Jose Water Company are, are not just Monte Sereno residents, so it's not something that the city is really an arbiter of. They are a private company and they do follow the rate-setting process. That being said, we can always provide information, but we wouldn't typically hold a debate for another, for another public company. So they're, in the past, I know that they have set up their own meetings, they've gone around to different jurisdictions, they've hosted it themselves, and so the city's not really in the middle of it. We don't have any say in the rates that they set. We are just merely able to provide some information, but it is a function of the company and the state of California.
I guess that I'm looking at is really providing, because we, we get the feedback from the citizens of Monte Sereno that they're unhappy. It obviously, we need to let people know what we can and can't do, which is pretty much anything, but provide that forum and that information and maybe host that as a city or maybe agree that we're not hosting it, but trying to provide that information and that forum to people so that they have good information. Because we see a lot of frustration, but we don't see good information as to what everyone's role can be and what people can do for themselves, where they would go, this kind of information.
And in the past, the city council has also, I mean, staffed as drafted letters, and the councils, you know, sent letters of, basically a protest. What usually, what usually happens is a number of cities that are affected kind of get together and draft a letter, so it's, it's not uncommon to do that. But we, you know, we need to be specific about the issues that we're, that the council's considering and, and their feelings about it, and then transmit that to San Jose Water.
And I think we saw that there was a letter that was circulated, and I'm not sure if this is something that, I just saw the letter today, that there is a request to draw on a fund by San Jose Water for some $9 million, I think it was, and there's a timed protest. And we just got that, and I think we, we might want to take a look at that, whether that's anything that we have an opinion about.
I mean, you know, transmitting your opinion is certainly a, is definitely something the council's done before and can certainly do again.
And we've actually written letters to them.
Yeah, there's been a couple since I've been here.
Okay.
Okay, so. Yes.
Thank you, Ed Turner. John Tang is the corporate mouthpiece for San Jose Water. The last time he spoke to the group of about 100 residents at the Los Gatos Town, Town Hall meeting, about half of them walked out in anger. He was lucky to get out alive, okay? The, the, and that there are a great many people in this area who think that San Jose Water is pillaging and plundering. And in my opinion, the proper role for the city here is to intervene with the CPUC, which has acted as nothing more than a rubber stamp for San Jose Water, and to place pressure on the PUC through our elected so-called representatives. And I think that's, certainly, a protest letter is a good thing, but making these people feel the heat is probably going to be a lot more effective, and doing so in conjunction with other cities is, in my view, an appropriate thing to do. So this is a big deal. Thank you.
And I think the letters that we've sent have been to the CPUC, not, not to the water company.
Yes. Okay, so let me, let me just make one announcement. April the 6th, there are going to be two events that we're, that we have, yes?
If you're referring to Women Voters' Event, it was canceled as of this morning.
Okay, so do you want to speak about that, since I have old information? Let me go ahead and, and, and talk about the, the event at the Cupertino Center. We have five people speaking. One is the council member from Palo Alto. The other one is the council member from, oh, the mayor of Cupertino. A council member from, who else?
Sunnyvale.
Sunnyvale, and another council member from Pleasanton. Yes, so, and they will be talking about the impact of SB 50 and CASA, the CASA compact. So it's going to be 1:30 to 3:30 at the Cupertino Senior Center. So if anybody here can attend, that would be great. Okay, so with that, I don't think we have, oh, you want to speak? Good.
And I know you wanted to announce that the, a group of five chapters of the League of Women Voters in the West Valley and the Silicon Valley were planning an event also that morning, but I was to be one of the panelists, and I was informed this morning that the league has canceled that event. They apparently were having difficulty finding people that they felt could, were willing to speak on the pro CASA or pro those housing bill areas. And so without having a breadth of speakers to cover the, the full variety of viewpoints, they felt that they could not proceed, so it was canceled this morning. So I hope people will go to the Cupertino, because it will be very informative.
Okay, well, thank you for that, because I need to let people know that it's been canceled. Okay, the, only the morning one. So the afternoon one still holds. So the morning one was supposed to be 9:30 to 11:30. And that was going to be at the Campbell Community Center. So if you see anything about the Campbell Community Center on Nextdoor, just say it's been canceled. Okay? Okay, so I think that's it for, for tonight. We have no further business, so let's move to adjourn. Our next meeting is April 16th at 7 o'clock. The meeting is adjourned.